Good evening. My name is Jan Wagner. The League of Women Voters, the Brea Chamber of Commerce, the candidates and I welcome you to tonight's forum. The League of Women Voters is a trusted, nonpartisan political organization that has been active for 100 years. While we never endorse a candidate or party, we are directly involved in shaping the important issues to keep our communities strong. As a League member, I have the opportunity to contribute in ways that have an impact on local, state, and even national issues. If you are interested in learning about how you can make a similar impact, I encourage you to pick up League information available tonight. Membership is open to men and to women. Assisting us this evening are our timekeepers Maggie Lee and Kathy Dazne, our question sorters Bailey Shaw, Annie Wood, and Jan Florrie. You will note that the question sorters will be screening the questions and will be writing. They will be doing that to avoid duplication and personal attacks, and also to make sure that the questions are asked that are pertaining only to city council issues. Our candidates this evening are Cecilia Hupp, Carrie Wines, Andrew Herrera, Blair Stewart, and Stephen Vargas. Please take this time to turn off any electronic devices and telephones. Our questions this evening are all generated by members in the audience. If at any time during the evening you wish to ask a question, just raise your hand and the ushers will come and pick up a card from you, and they will come down to the question We will do our very best to ask as many questions as possible. In order to do that, we ask that you refrain from applause until the end of the evening. Our candidates met this evening and drew lots for their seating order and their order for their opening, closing, and question times. Ms. Hupp will be the first to give her opening statement. Mr. Vargas will be the first to give his closing statement. The questions will be asked in rotation order. So we'll begin. The first to give her opening statement is Cecilia Hupp.
Good evening. I've been a Brea business owner and a resident for 35 years, and it's been an honor to serve you as your city council member for the last two terms. During my tenure, I've been instrumental in establishing a pension trust reserve account that has grown to over 9.5 million, returning our fire department to a Brea-only command structure, obtaining millions of federal and state dollars to fund our public safety needs, our parks and trails, including the popular tracks at Brea, the newly opened skate park, Lagos de Moreno Park, and the upcoming Aero Vista Park renovations. I have helped to consistently deliver a balanced budget with a 25% reserve policy and over $15 million in reserves, continued to provide full city services during the recent pandemic. I've supported community outreach programs such as the Brea Core Plan, Brea Envisions, Shape Brea, Engage Brea, the Housing Element Update, and those are just to name a few of the programs that we've presented. I've been active with our senior center on a monthly basis and have personally helped to fund the annual senior center Christmas party since 2013. I also represent Brea on numerous regional committees to ensure that we have a voice in future decisions, both at the state and the federal level. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Wines.
My name is Carrie Wines. I've been a resident of Brea for about 35 years. I've been the lucky beneficiary of the, of many of the council members and their wise decisions throughout the years, as well as many of the people here. I have lived and was educated, and I currently work in Brea. I'd like to thank the City of Brea, the League of Women Voters, my loving family and patient husband, and my many friends who have contributed wisdom, knowledge, and compassion and laughter. I volunteered throughout my life, starting as a young, throughout my entire life. I've always found a way to try to improve the world around me, consistently Girl Scout leaders. I was on the board for BEF for about seven years. I became involved with the political sphere when I appealed the approval of a high-traffic drive-through across from Laurel Elementary Magnet School. While this problem is ongoing, it's convinced me to do many things. It's convinced me to help people find a voice. It's convinced me to dive deeper into the how and whys of city government and how it can improve citizens' lives. It's convinced me to assist in creating a better city by addressing the details that are often overlooked in the shuffle, such as veterans. Sometimes I would like to take the concept of possibly volunteering to help neighbors, the little details that get lost. My political philosophy is that I am very fiscally conservative. You know, I'm here with my 10-year-old shirt, my eight-year-old shoes, and my Fullerton Assistance League pants, and I'm telling you, I can guarantee I'm very cheap. My husband knows. So, I do have an eye, though, toward how to improve people's lives that doesn't cost a lot of money. I married a man who's one of sevens, one of seven children, and their family consistently had to make choices, just like we have to make choices.
Thank you, Ms. Wines.
Do we go to Disney or the beach?
Mr. Herrera.
I'd like to thank the North Orange County League of Women's Voters for giving me this great opportunity. Thank you to the Brea Chamber of Commerce for sponsoring this event. Thank you to the other candidates for being so welcoming. I admire all of you. Most importantly, thank you to Brea and its residents for making life wonderful for me. I think a city council should be a diverse group and represent all its residents, regardless of age, education, occupation, income, hobbies, or anything else for that matter. We have such a wide range of people, and that is what makes Brea so great. It's kind of crazy, but if a computer-generated a Brea resident based on the census report for average age, nationality, education, income, and even commute time, you would get someone almost identical to me. I'm quite literally the average Brea resident. A vote for me will be a vote for a different perspective, a different energy, and might encourage residents to get involved when they realize they don't need to be an expert to make a difference. If elected, I would like to help focus on traffic and parking, public safety, working to find alternatives to tax increases, and promoting Brea businesses outside of our own city. I give 100% effort in everything that I do, and I am an expert at listening and learning. I will utilize all the resources Brea has to offer its council members, and I will always try my best to do what is honorable and fair. If residents have any questions, please visit andrewforbrea.com, and I will personally reach back out to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vargas. Oh, did I skip Mr. Stewart? I'm sorry. First mistake of the night. Mr. Stewart.
Good evening, and thank you to the League of Women Voters and Brea Chambers for moderating and hosting this forum. My name is Blair Stewart, and I've had the honor, the pleasure, and pleasure to grow up in Brea. My brothers and I were raised by a single parent who had the foresight in the early 80s to move us to the safe and beautiful city. My brothers and I were, I am a product of the, byproduct of the Brea school systems and played sports for our schools. After graduating Brea Olinda, I joined the United States Marine Corps and also attended Cal State University of Fullerton studying criminal justice. I am a father of two daughters and presently a firefighter in the Los Angeles County area. Serving is ingrained in my DNA, and now it's time I serve the city that has helped provide not only safety and support, but numerous opportunities to become successful in life. If elected, I will focus on ensuring Brea continues to be a safe city. Brea residents work hard for their families, their homes, and their businesses. I will ensure our public safety officers have the tools and resources needed to protect our residents' way of life. I will also focus on fiscal responsibility, ensuring accountability and transparency while assisting in delivering a balanced budget. I'll push for responsible housing development that primarily focuses on residents' vision for Brea while meeting the state mandate's regional housing numbers. I will always place a high importance on listening to our community's shareholders' issues and concerns. So please, vote for Blair Stewart, second on your ballot. Thank you very much.
Again, my apologies, Mr. Stewart. Mr. Vargas.
Thank you, Jan. I'm Stephen Vargas, your Brea councilman, former mayor, and 30-year resident of this beautiful city. Recently retired after 20 years working for Chevron as a construction safety specialist, and I still serve as a lieutenant commander in the Navy with the CBs, also Construction Battalion. I know about building. You know, in military service, it has instilled in me a certain fortitude and courage to stand for what is right. And we have a chain of command, of course, but in that, when we get an order, we're allowed to question it. We're supposed to question it, particularly as an officer, to make sure we give options so that the commander has all the options at his disposal. Well, I've done that on the city council. I've been at times, I've changed some hearts and minds with my positions over the years to make the city of Brea a better Brea. I've been your advocate for change in Brea politics, and I've had a tough skin, sometimes have to stand at times on principles and values that you share, like keeping your word or treating people with dignity and respect, and genuine caring for the community and for our employees. Over the past eight years, I've been an advocate to support technological innovations within our community and within the Brea Police Department. Technology to help law enforcement track and monitor suspects through GPS systems, collect and store data to be used with cloud computing, and we're finally making that a reality. I've also worked to secure firefighting heli-hydrons in our hillsides to protect against wildfires and protect our open space. Public safety is my number-one concern, and is my belief that all families should live in peace, feel safe in their surroundings, and experience a healthy and safe quality of life here in Brea.
Thank you, Mr. Vargas. Now it's time for our questions section of the evening, and our first question will go to Ms. Wines. Ms. Wines, what do you think should be the relationship between the Brea City Council and the Brea Olinda Unified School District Board? And how would you support that relationship as a city council member?
Currently, I think that they really need to have a very strong relationship. I think that they are just starting to explore that possibility because there are many things that, decisions that are made on the city level that affect the school, school district, and the students within it. For instance, the reason how I became involved in political, the political sphere was where there was, there were issues with zoning, and that needs to be discussed, and we need to have ongoing communication. So I think primary and most important is the communication that is between the two organizations. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Herrera.
I think, excuse me, I think the city council and the school board, you know, are a team, and they need to work together to focus and, you know, improve the lives of the kids in the community. Unfortunately, I don't have any kids, so I don't have too much experience in this, you know, this field, but, I mean, obviously, I would support anything that is brought that is a good idea, and, you know, obviously, the kids are our future, and, you know, they would have my complete support for any ideas that came forward that were, you know, that seemed like a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stewart.
Well, I think that every entity in the city should have some sort of relationship with each other, whether it's strong dialogue, assisting each other in certain ways, but let's be clear, the school board has their agenda, and that agenda is to educate our children. The city council is a completely separate entity, although, again, we should assist each other. We have our own separate budgets. City School Board, I believe, is approximately $71 million budget. That is for them to focus on school-related issues, education, books, teaching, fields, things like that. City Council has a whole entire menu of things to worry about, so I would suggest that we just keep that separate, but assist each other and be in communication as much as possible with all entities in the city.
Thank you. Mr. Vargas.
Yes, Jan, would you mind repeating the question so that we all know?
Sure. What do you think should be the relationship between the Brea City Council and the Brea Olinda Unified School District Board? And how would you support that relationship as a city council member?
Sure, and thank you, and I'll take the time hit on that. So, we are two separate government agencies, of course, but where we can benefit each other is not living in silos where we believe that, you know, this is your responsibility and this is, and that's your responsibility. I'll give you a classic example. The Laurel Elementary School, it queues up onto Imperial Highway. I brought this up about four years ago. It's a consistent thing I keep on bringing up. Well, we need the school district to help us with that, to keep our kids safe. So, there's an example where the school district could help us, and we're working towards that, but the bottom line comes down to it, it's been a struggle. We can simply fix that by doing a cul-de-sac there and take away that whole problem. So, there's an example where we need to work closer, and I've been trying to work closer with them and willing to continue that effort.
Thank you. Ms. Hupp.
I think a good relationship between the city council and the school board is essential. They're all of our children, and it hasn't always been that way. I know that I've advocated for it since 2014, and we've worked very closely with the school board. Lagos de Moreno Park is a perfect example of that, and we work closely with the school board when there are needs. We pay for the crossing guards because the school had a need, and they expressed it. We meet once a month with the school board, and we collaborate. We talk about the city's goals, what we're looking to do, what their needs are, what they're looking to do, and we try to stay on the same page even though we are separate entities.
Thank you. A note to the audience. The question sorters are noting that there are a lot of candidate-specific questions. We have done that in the past, but this year, we are all, we are asking every question of every candidate. So if you'd like to resubmit your question in a way that it can be asked of all candidates, please consider doing so, because we will not be putting forward candidate-specific questions. Thank you. Our next question goes first to Mr. Herrera. What is your position on maintaining or eliminating community facilities districts?
That is a great question, and recently, I was lucky enough to have a meeting with our city manager. He explained that we have a great team within the City of Brea that council members are able to utilize when things come up we may not be 100% certain about. I am excited to get a chance to work with them. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stewart.
Would you repeat the question, please?
What is your position on maintaining or eliminating community facilities districts?
Well, I would propose reducing taxes. First, looking at the areas where we are double and sometimes triple taxing our homeowners for services other homeowners pay a single tax for. There are four CFDs, in short, for Community Facilities District within Brea. 691 residents are assessed extra taxes on their property tax bill that increases each year and has no ending. Not to mention, it doesn't increase the level of public services provided. I believe the estimate for this fiscal year is $1.7 million that will be generated from the CFD taxes. The biggest headshaker in all this, 26 homeowners who are blessed enough to have qualified to purchase a home in Brea's Affordable Housing Program are double and sometimes triple taxed for public services on their tax bill. These are homeowners that have proven to be more financially challenged than residents that did not have to purchase due to Affordable Housing Program. So why we saddle them with duplicate and triple taxes for the same level of services is beyond me. Now, let's be clear, CFDs are not illegal, but just like my mom used to say, just because it's right doesn't make it right.
Thank you. Mr. Vargas.
Thank you. Community facilities districts are a method to allow developers to transfer their upfront costs of their development onto the backs of future residents. And I'm very proud to see in the audience our city treasurer Denise Eby, who brought this to our attention about a year ago, specifically asking us to look at the Affordable Housing CFDs and so we could relieve those people. And I also would like to acknowledge my colleague Marty Semenoff, who's made this a key issue for many years, that he's been an advocate for this. So, we are so close to making a change on this, and we're going to start with the ones affecting affordable housing. A particular concern for me is placing this on those that could least afford it. So I'm looking forward to three votes and finally put the end to this injustice. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hupp.
Thank you. I'm not a fan of CFDs. I understand the need for financing for specific amenities that might have to be provided, for instance, if we were to put a police substation in a neighborhood to service that neighborhood entirely. That would be something that we might be able to pass, but right now, the CFDs we have are a form of dual taxation, and at the very least, we need to sunset them so that there is an end in sight. And Mr. Vargas is right. Mr. Semenoff started the discussion, and we are actively participating and looking forward to finding some way to sunset these.
Thank you. Ms. Wines.
I would have to echo the fact that I do not think that they are a good idea, and I defer to the answers that have already been stated and agree.
Thank you. Our next question goes first to Mr. Stewart. Please share your understanding of the relatively new state housing mandates and explain how you think they will affect Brea.
Brea has a planning housing element that's a chapter of the city general plan and identifies policies and programs to meet existing and projected future housing needs for all economic segments. We have a list of things that the housing element includes, and that's to assist in, one of them is to assist in provisions of new affordable housing, maintain existing housing and quality of affordability. Every eight years, this existing, excuse me, planned housing element needs to be updated every eight years per state law. We do receive RENA, Regional Housing Needs Assessment, numbers. This eight years is 2,365 units that need to be planned for in the eight years. Out of those 2,635 units, or 4,000, sorry, 2,435, I'm sorry, let me back up. 2,365 units, we need to make sure that in those numbers, 669 units are very low-income, 393 are low-income, 403 are moderate-income, and above-moderate-income, 900 units.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Mr. Vargas.
Thank you, Jan. So, I wrote to the governor when I was mayor last year on September 1st, and in this letter, I'd just like to read this part of it. "On behalf of the City of Brea, I write to respectfully request that you veto SB 9." So SB 9 was this law that the legislator passed to essentially allow multifamily homes to go into single-family neighborhoods. So our whole city council is against this. We're active at the State League of Cities, and my colleagues are at the National League of Cities, also making sure it doesn't go further. So SB 9 is something that started this. It's legislation coming down from Sacramento that's affecting us, and we are all against it, and that's what we did and I did to fight it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hupp.
Thank you. We're all well aware of the state housing mandates. RENA is a thorn in every city side right now. Not so much the number of houses that are required. We can meet that 2,365-unit number. What the problem is going to be is meeting the number of affordable and low-income that the state is requiring. This is an unfunded state mandate. We no longer have redevelopment. We can't help builders to provide this type of housing because we don't build housing. We only plan for it. So, it's affecting us in a lot of ways. We need to put pressure on the state to find a funding mechanism to help us supply those types of housing because it is needed housing.
Thank you. Ms. Wines.
Those numbers that RENA is, they're for the time period of 2021 to 2029, we are talking about the eight-year time period. Brea currently has a 10% rule where the builders must have, must have 10% at below-market prices. If you take a look at the low and the very low number of units, the very low being 669 and the low being 393, that's over 1,000 units, which is actually far above, that's 44% of the homes that should be built coming up, and that is far above what we currently have as the rule. I'm a little concerned about being able to meet those numbers, and we need to take a look at the possibility of housing, of nonprofits, doing a partnership with them, seeing if there's anybody that, and I know that in the past, Brea has partnered up with low-income housing developers. We need to look for that in the future as well.
Thank you. Mr. Herrera.
I believe it was during the lockdown that I was running along the tracks when I saw what appeared to be new construction site on State College in the corporate parking lot. I asked the security guard what was coming, and he said new apartments. At first, I thought it was a strange location, but now I realize that Brea is required to meet certain mandates and may have approved this location to help keep the city beautiful. I will always try and have this mindset when it comes to building mandates and compromising. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question goes first to Mr. Vargas. What is your position on preserving open space in Brea?
Yes, so, so I am by trade, I did kitchen and bathroom models, and I work for the CBs, so I'm very familiar with building. I know where is a good place to build and where is a place that's inappropriate. And on our beautiful hillsides, it's inappropriate area to build because of the slope ratio. So, I'm absolutely open, or love the open space. I'm committed to protecting the open space, and I will, and I will continue to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hupp.
I'm very committed to maintaining our open space. It's one of our most valuable assets. In fact, I've been endorsed by the, I'm drawing a blank here. I'm sorry. By the Sierra Club, thank you. It's not only that the open space is important, it's critical, and I think our state is finally trying to recognize this. It's dangerous to build in our open space on our hillsides. What we're surrounded with are natural fire corridors, and we start to build there because everyone wants a view. Well, when there's a fire, that fire goes up first and foremost, and so you're putting those people at risk. So not only do we need to expand our housing in the city and preserve that open space, but stop building in places that are dangerous.
Thank you. Ms. Wines.
I am very committed to the maintenance of open spaces within Brea. I believe that we can do things to avert abutting up to it by having housing a little bit closer to the job areas. I know that that has been something that has been discussed. Also, I think that we have to place as a community a higher priority on the maintenance of the open space within the developments that we do have, that perhaps there needs to be a certain percentage set aside within that community to be maintained as open space. I also think that we need to examine city properties. Currently, we have two golf courses. Can we turn one of them back into a driving range and use part of that for open space and maintaining and revert that into area that the rest of the community can use? I think that we need to explore a lot of different options.
Did you want me to repeat the question? Did you want me to repeat the question?
Did you want me to do it, Herrera?
Did I skip again?
Yeah. I don't mind skipping this one.
I am losing, I'm losing my touch. I am so sorry.
Jen, he's so good-looking, you're getting distracted, is what it is.
I am. Mr. Herrera, yes. What is your position on preserving open space in Brea?
Well, part of, a huge part of my life is just interacting with open space. I mean, it's literally, half my life is dedicated to things revolving around open space, so it's actually one of my biggest focuses in life, just in general. And I mean, it's part of what I love Brea for, and I mean, it's in my best interest as a representative of the city to make sure that we preserve it and make sure that we all get to enjoy it. And so, I mean, you can count on me to support, you know, keeping it available for us. Thank you.
Thank you, and my apologies. Mr. Stewart.
Unequivocally, I am for protecting open spaces. I for one enjoy passive and active recreation in our open spaces, and I know Brea places a high importance on it. I believe it's, part of it is protected, it's placed in our general city general plan to protect the hillsides. So again, without question, we protect the hillsides. I love stepping out of my balcony and seeing the beautiful hills, and I certainly wouldn't want to see a bunch of houses and buildings on top of that. And I echo also what Cecilia says about the fire dangers when building there, amongst other dangers. So again, without doubt, protect the hillsides and our open spaces.
Thank you. Our next question goes first to Ms. Hubb. What can the city do to ensure a healthy business community?
That goes right back to housing. We need to provide more housing at various income levels to support our business community and to keep our workforce in Brea. If we're offering jobs that are duplicate in the inland empire and our workforce can live out there and work there, we're losing people, and we're losing business at the same time. It also requires that we work closely with our Chamber of Commerce to ensure that we're keeping a vibrant, active city to attract those businesses to not only come to Brea, but to expand their existing operations in Brea.
Thank you. Ms. Weins.
Yes, I actually spoke to a couple small business owners during the meet and greet that I had. They actually wanted to convey that they appreciated the business licensing that they can do online. They, just to let you know that there's some kudos. She said that it's very easy compared to the other cities. But what I think that we can do is that, she said that she doesn't ever hear from Brea city council members, there's no direct contact, and I think that what we need to concentrate is not only on appealing to other small businesses to enter into Brea, but also maintain the businesses that we have here already. That means more communication, reaching out to them, contacting them, going for a cup of coffee. I don't know, there's a lot of different options. I think we have to maintain those relationships, similar to grant writing where you always are in constant contact, and you touch base with them every once in a while. I think they really would like to hear from council members rather than just chamber.
Thank you. Mr. Herrera.
Yeah, one of my biggest focuses and just one of my loves is business, small business, large business, but I mean, it's very essential to our city. And one of the things that I would like to do if elected is to propose or bring to the table an idea that we try to allocate a small budget to advertise our businesses and the city in general outside of Brea. I've asked many people outside of Brea, you know, what do you think about Brea? And almost everyone says, oh, I love the Brea Mall. Now, don't get me wrong, I love the Brea Mall. It's made us famous. But when we get people to the city for the Brea Mall, we need to somehow get them to visit the rest of the city, and I think by a campaign to advertise outside of the city would be a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stewart.
Well, we should continue to work closely with the Chamber of Commerce to collaborate in finding ways to attract new business to Brea. We can also look at more workforce housing projects that will attract companies with a younger workforce, and that checks a few boxes. It checks affordable housing box, it reduces our carbon footprint and traffic because people can now walk to, possibly walk to work or ride a bike to work or even a short drive to work. A third box that would, a workforce housing type would do, would help increase revenue streams, for example, sales tax. We bring in more residents here in these type of workforce housing, so they're going to work, live, play, spend their money here. So I think we could use some of those ways to attract businesses and help our local economy out. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vargas.
Yes, Jen, let me give you some numbers for the people at home. In the last couple of years, we've lost nearly 20,000 jobs here in Brea, and that's a lot of revenue. Vecman Coulter lost 1,500 workers. Bank America Card Center just recently shut down 3,500 workers. Mercury Insurance projected to lose 2,500 workers. 500 from Baker Furnace. Nationwide Insurance, 1,500, and Bristol Industries, 2,000, and then Suzuki America downsized by almost 500 employees. So we're losing and hemorrhaging employees. So we need to have a focused effort to bring employees, employers back here. We're doing that with revitalizing our downtown. Putting in that parking structure there was a start. Having the Tower Record Building be empty for 15 years is outrageous. Luckily, we have a gym going in there. They're already breaking ground on the interiors of that, so we'll finally get that place up. But we need to really focus on helping our business community bring business here to Brea.
Thank you. Our next question goes first to Ms. Weins. What would you do as a city council member to help Brea meet the state requirements for reducing waste sent to landfills?
Could you repeat that, please?
What would you do as a city council member to help Brea meet the state requirements for reducing waste sent to landfills?
I think that it would come back to, again, communication. And also, when I was out canvassing, I was talking to a couple people in La Floresta, and they were saying that they actually do not have brown waste and cans to be able to put their waste in, and which to me is very surprising. So how many different other housing developments do not have accessible brown waste or to be able to compost or anything of that nature? So that needs to be set up, and I think that we need to have a system, a citywide system for people to be able to take their recyclables. Are there any other options for businesses to be able to recycle? I don't think so as of yet, that there is any sort of process by which, large-scale, the restaurants recycle anything. So I think that we need to start that.
Mr. Herrera.
Yeah, it's actually interesting because at my current job, you know, we have kind of the same issue, it's in a different city, but they're starting to, because a lot of the businesses were never forced, not forced, but never required to recycle a lot of their waste. And I think if we encourage and we, I don't know about enforce, but if we could encourage more people to recycle and come up with plans and incentives or different ideas, I'm no expert in that field, but I'm sure that we have a lot of residents that are experts. But even at my company, up until just recently because they mandated it, we were wasting so much cardboard, for example, and cardboard actually can create revenue. And so now we're looking at ways to recycle and make extra money off of that cardboard, and that could go for all kinds of different things, and I think we could encourage more people to recycle. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stewart.
Well, I think we need to have certain outreach programs for recycling programs, something to reach the community, the businesses, to encourage recycling, composting, and a lot of that is going to be education. If we could produce any kind of education that could be sent out to our residents and businesses, maybe even provide some sort of incentive if they do save on or reduce their refuge from their businesses or houses, maybe we could give them some sort of incentive to do so with rewards or reductions in fees or bills on their trash bills. Excuse me. Anyways, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vargas.
Yes, the organic waste ruling is just another law put forward by our legislature that they know nothing about trash or waste, except how to waste money. And this is another unfunded mandate coming down from Sacramento that we have to deal with. And so we're doing what we can, but I got to tell you something about our landfill. We have an entire methane recapture facility, and it brings that to a gas-powered turbine that supplies electricity for 25,000 homes in Anaheim. That could have been stuff that we're doing, and that wet waste is what makes that methane. Organic waste is considered more than just food waste. It's also cardboard, paper, and wood. You imagine having two-by-fours in a trash can with food waste. How do you separate that out from the landfill and make that viable is beyond me. So we'll continue to do what we must as far as state mandates, but that's all I have to say on that. Thank you.
Ms. Hubb.
SB 1383 was passed in 2016. It took effect on January 1st. The purpose of it was to reduce greenhouse gas emissions from landfills and to slow climate change. It requires us to provide organics collection services by 2024. The organics that need to be separated are food scraps, landscape waste, wood, paper products, manure, and organic textiles. We currently have a yard waste can that a lot of those items can go into, and we're working very closely with our trash provider, Republic Services, to implement the program so that it's workable for everyone in the city, including our businesses.
Thank you. Our next question goes first to Mr. Herrera. Briefly describe the relationship you believe the city council should have with the city manager and the city staff.
Sorry, could you repeat the question?
Yes. Briefly describe the relationship you believe the city council should have with the city manager and the city staff.
Well, this was a question that was brought up to me at my very first introduction to this whole process, and I gave the completely wrong answer. And I was corrected and given the very detailed answer, but I do know that the city council is only oversees the city manager and the city attorney, and then all of the employees report to the city manager. So the relationship is we can, we have access and we can utilize all of the services, but if we ever need to sort of interact, or we need to request, or we need to have them do anything, we are to contact the city manager, and then he will distribute the work to the appropriate department. But I think having a friendly, you know, relationship with the city and all of the staff is crucial, but I did learn the exact actual roles, so it was quite a learning experience. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stewart.
Well, Brea operates in a council-manager format. The council is a constituted legislative body that sets all policy for the provisions of public services to the communities such as fire, police, public works. In other words, the council should listen to the community's needs and concerns and wants, and creates policy to provide the aforementioned. Council also appoints the city manager and the city attorney. The city manager is the chief administrative officer who implements council's policy through various departments such as police, fire, community development, community services. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vargas.
Yes, we, I've had the opportunity to work with three different city managers, and they got progressively less restrictive, and our current city manager, Bill Garrido, is fantastic. He, I pushed back when they said, the previous one said that I have to go to the city manager and I can't go to an executive. If I'm paying an executive $250,000 or $300,000 a year, I expect him to communicate with the city manager and let them know that, hey, Councilman Vargas asked me a question. It's just, you know, efficiency, okay? I cannot not always get to the city manager, and the city manager's not always around. But I can get to the senior executives. We respect that relationship because we do not go to lower-level staff to respect that boundary that we've been, you know, that's been flexed, I guess you could say.
Thank you. Ms. Hubb.
Mr. Herrera was correct. We are in charge of two people, the city manager and the city attorney. But I think the key to that relationship is, as Mr. Vargas alluded to, respect. And we have a great deal of respect for everyone in our organization. Communication's important. Yes, we first go to the city manager, but it's important to have a working relationship with everyone in our city, all of the city employees, and I have that relationship with them. And I've learned a lot from my communication with staff, with the police department, with the fire department, but at the same time, you have to respect that our city manager is actually their boss. We are not.
Thank you. Ms. Weins.
Yes, we do function on that council-manager format. I think that once we have the needs of the community met, I think that it really is a matter of just having an honest, open dialogue between the two groups, between city council and in talking with the city manager. And the staff is there to be supportive, but we're also there to be clear about what is needed. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm shuffling around because we are very close to coming to the last question that we can ask before closing statements. Depending on how long this round lasts, this may be our last question. And it will go first to Mr. Stewart. What can the city do to support underserved populations such as the homeless in Brea?
Well, I think Brea's Brea has a police officer, Lamar Tenon, who is our homeless liaison officer, and a team of community service employees. They go out and identify individuals and assist them in providing beds, help and other support. Many times, just keep in mind, many times it takes several encounters before an individual will accept any help. Brea has also contributed funding to, along with 13 other cities in the North Orange County area, to navigation centers. They're located in Buena Park and Placentia and offer, have about 250 beds available. Brea and the rest of the region no longer just want to kick the can down the road. Brea and adjacent cities do understand it's not a one-city problem, it's a regional problem, and it affects all of us. So cities are working together to address this root problem. And there's another bill that had come down, it's SB 1338. It gives family members and first responders, medical professionals, a pathway to get treatment for those that need for mental health or substance abuse.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Vargas.
Wonderful things that the governor has done, is sign SB 1338, which has to do with taking positive steps to allowing this intervention for mental health and safety responses. So we can get the homeless to the facilities they need to be. Brea, we have done a great job. We pitched in and supported Buena Park and Placentia, and Lamar Tenon, our homeless liaison, is doing outstanding job. He knows who the homeless are and what their needs are, and he gets them to the resources that they need. We're also doing work in our community center to expand that outreach. So Brea's So, so Brea is really doing a great job as far as reaching out to our homeless and helping where we can.
Thank you. Ms. Hupp.
Brea is part of the North Orange County Service Provider Area, the North Orange County SPA. We work closely with the cities around us. We've collaborated in building a number of shelters, and we all share use of those shelters as well as support them. We're also part of the North Orange County Collaborative to address homelessness. Just recently, we obtained over $5 million from the federal government to build that facility and address the needs in that facility. And it goes beyond homelessness. We have a mental health issue that has to be addressed, and the governor has finally recognized that, and I think it's going to be key to solving this problem. We also work closely with our churches to help provide food for, for people in need. So it's, it's beyond homelessness. There are a lot of other things involved, and we're working closely with all of the organizations that provide those services for our community.
Thank you. Ms. Weins.
Boy, what's left? I have, as, as well, I think that they are doing a great job with the 250 beds that have been put together with the other North Orange County cities to combat homelessness. The Family Resource Center has, has their, their resources available to help out and guide people who are on the edge or are homeless, and of course, the liaison. I think that we do need to have potentially people within the, the police department that actually are, are non-armed response, whether it's social workers that are dealing with the mental health, so that we have them responding to problems that arise. And we also do need more beds. With, with all the other cities that we are partnering with, 250 is fantastic, we could always use more. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Herrera.
It was around the holiday season a couple years back, I would see one of our few homeless residents each night and decided to try to help him. I spent probably five hours over a few days calling and emailing anyone I could think of. It was Assemblyman Chen's office that helped me get a call from the person in charge of homelessness in Orange County. She said, let's get him off the street, even just temporarily, until we can do something permanent, maybe with a hotel voucher. I was so excited to tell him, and I rushed right over. He replied, no thanks, I'm okay. I was shocked, and it was then that I realized homelessness is a much different issue than I thought. I also want to add that this was before I knew about all the Brea resources, obviously, because I could have saved a lot of time, so, thank you.
Thank you. We should go to closing statements at this point. Our first to give his closing statement this evening will be Mr. Vargas.
Thank you, Jan. And I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters, the Brea Chamber, and our Brea City staff for hosting this event tonight and to help us to get out our solutions the city of Brea will be facing for the next four years. And thank you, citizens in the audience and at home for tuning in. I am a straightforward, no-nonsense councilman, and I have held myself to the highest ethical standard demanded by my role as a public official and a naval officer. We have shared values that you as Brea's citizens should demand, like keeping your word, treating people with dignity and respect, and a genuine caring for our community members and our employees. I'll continue to be your advocate for these values and work to make you proud of my service as an elected representative, as your elected representative. You may contact me directly by my cell at 714-306-4523. I always put my cell number on my business card and hand it out to anyone I see. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stewart.
Mine's a little shorter. I'd like to thank everyone involved for putting on this forum, the audience for attending, and all those watching from home. I want all to know I'm committed to the welfare of Brea and its residents. I will always place the common good above individual interests. Just like my campaign, if elected, I will always be available to the public. I want to hear your issues and concerns, and I want to help you with your issues and concerns. If elected city council, you will be reminded once again that we work for you, the residents, not the other way around. Please vote for Blair Stewart, second name on the ballot. Mom, I know you're watching from heaven, I love you, and I miss you tremendously. God bless America, God bless Brea.
Thank you. Mr. Herrera.
Thank you again to everyone that was involved in putting on this great event. Based on advice I was given by some highly respected residents, my best tool will be my ears. Regardless of how this election turns out, Brea will be in great hands, and I will still be supporting the city any way I can. We each get three votes on the ballot, and I can promise to give 100% effort and never stop listening if I can earn one of those votes. Feel free to reach out to me anytime on my website, andrewforbrea.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Weins.
Thank you to the audience and the audience at home. I hope to be able to encourage transparent development, responsive city governance, and contribute to the continued financial responsibility. You will find that I am a very, I am very willing to fight for what I believe the people that I represent and their best interests. I am very willing to listen and have done so a lot. As I, I agree with Mr. Herrera, where our most important instrument are our ears, I will sit down and discuss what might be troubling anybody, anyone. You are more than welcome to, to come and speak with me if I am chosen to represent I'm very excited about the possibility of, of learning a lot of new things about leading the city of Brea. I have learned a lot so far and have a lot more, if you'd like to see, I'm also on the web.
Thank you. Ms. Hupp.
Well, those of you that know me know I like to keep things short and sweet, so I won't keep you here much longer, but I'd like to thank all of you for coming and listening to what each one of us have to say. The next four years will come with many opportunities as well as challenges. I welcome the opportunities, and I'm prepared to face the challenges and deliver real solutions. I have a proven track record, and I respectfully ask for your vote in November. Thank you.
Thank you all. On behalf of the Brea Chamber of Commerce and the League of Women Voters of North Orange County, please join me in thanking our candidates for running and participating in this forum. Thanks also to our timekeepers and question sorters, our organizer of tonight's event, and thank you all for being an attentive audience and for asking such good questions. Please check out votersedge.org. It's a little green box on your, on our website and on your, I think it's on your Easy Voter Guide. Pick that up before you leave, those are both very handy tools for you. You can put in your address and your ballot will come up. It's, it's really a, a nice, easy tool. Tonight's forum is being recorded and will be rebroadcast daily on Brea TV at 6:00 PM through Sunday, November 6. You can find Brea TV on Spectrum Cable, Channel 3, AT&amp;T U-verse, Channel 99, and streamed online at cityofbrea.net/breatv. The candidate's forum also will be available on demand on the Brea Chamber of Commerce YouTube channel. Regardless of how you vote, we thank all of you for participating in our process. Without you, our government simply would not work. Thank you and good night.